I'm going to call this Council Caucus meeting to order, committee meetings to order, and we're going to start with a presentation from the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. This group was going to come in last week. It was a dark Monday, playing around with the schedule, so appreciate a couple of minutes to start off. I think the State of the City address talked about how do we refocus some of the efforts here, and it worked with Creating Y Media, Christopher O'Reilly and his team in terms of coming up with a concept and just a marketing tool. Councilmember Parrazo, the format they came up with is it starts with me, so it's really to have everybody assume some responsibility for it, for the actions, and then how do we roll that out across the city? And what we've talked about initially is doing recycling. This commercial, it's a commercial, it's a broadcast you'll see, which starts out with some real great talent, talks about the recycling, and it ends with some more limited talent. But the format is very clever, and it's roughly 30 seconds, so it goes on YouTube, City website, all the multimedia now. The beginning of it, hopefully we'll use it across the city for everything we do. The second portion of it is focused on recycling, but I believe it's applicable to people getting their dog licenses, building permits, other functions that the city has, whether it's putting money in the meter when you park your car, when you're paying your taxes. And then it again ends with somebody with limited talent who focuses it back to city resources. And now hopefully that we can take this and expand it, so that we use the beginning of it, get different, again whether it's licensing the dogs, this one again happens to be recycling, building permits, whatever, and we can plug in other individuals at the end where it may be more applicable for the police chief, the city clerk, council members, other community leaders, to encourage people to assume some responsibility for their actions and try and help make the community better. And with that, if Councilmember Parrazo wants to say anything, I turn it over to Christopher O'Reilly to show this, and then...
There's the intro.
The intro music. You've got mail.
Something inspiring happens when one person decides to make a difference. That one "we" becomes a "we." Every day we can do things to make our city better, like recycling just 30 percent more, which could save our city over $350,000 each year. To learn more about recycling in our city, go to cityisconnected.com. Because it starts with me.
Nice.
Very good. Again, it's quick, simple, and I think it allows us to build a message. So you take that first portion with the kids, and that's what I would like to continue on through the entire campaign with whatever topics we pick, and try and encourage them to get their parents to do things. And a lot of things that we ask people to do are not that complicated, so that if a child in fifth grade, sixth grade can get it, somebody who's in their 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s ought to be able to get it. And where that, again, talks about recycling is the mid-portion of the commercial, in the end, happens to have me, but to look to plug other people into those slots in that format of that commercial, so that, you know, it could be the police chief, council members, community leaders, in that we, again, roll this out over the next year, trying to just improve quality of life and increase the efficiency in some of the things that we actually do in the City of Scottsdale. Well, this, the other part is not only is going to start on television on Time Warner and Skynect TV Zone, it's also going to be on Channel 6, WRGB, and it's going to be supported with a bus side campaign, and it's also, we're going to reprint the recycling book using some of these logos, these fonts, maybe fully pointing some of the information down, so it's a little bit more readable. But those are the three prompts to delivering this message into the community.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Good. I like it.
You'll actually start seeing spots tomorrow on RDB, and then Wednesday on the Time Warner Cable.
Great.
As well as the local access channel. Right. And that's on the City website, and pick it up in neighborhood groups and other community organizations.
Ms. Parrazo.
Just one comment, because sometimes I think our schools are unfairly critiqued, and if you ever want to see a group of really impressive kids, visit Lincoln Elementary. I mean, these kids were so impressive. The one young woman who was in the video was walking around with cards saying, "Excuse me, would you be willing to take a business card and visit our online radio station and learn more about the interviews that we do here every week?" She was like in fourth grade. So they do this radio show, they bring in people from the community and interview them. And if there's any group of kids that can get this job done and get their parents recycled, it's these kids. And, you know, I'm sure they're spread far and wide across our city. It was really, it was really a wonderful, wonderful press event.
Good.
And they're not afraid to ask questions.
Yeah.
They were great to work with. We did it on Saturday, and they all met us down at Proctor's, and, you know, they were just eyes wide open, asking a lot of questions, very excited. And yeah, it was definitely a bitter cold day, and they worked hard for us, with us, and they were proud to be parts of Skynect TV. We were excited to work with them.
Neat.
You guys want to see it again? That's a big, yeah, sorry. And that limited talent at the end, we couldn't do much about it, but we were forced to work with them.
Something inspiring happens when one person decides to make a difference. That one "we" becomes a "we." Every day we can do things to make our city better, like recycling just 30 percent more, which could save our city over $350,000 each year. To learn more about recycling in our city, go to cityisconnected.com. Because it starts with me.
Very good.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for letting us kind of bump into the lead in here. You know, we're going to talk.
Good for us to see that.
Very nice.
Yep. All right.
All right, calls to order, Health and Recreation. All right, the first item on the agenda is just the public hearing that's going to be held next Monday for the affirmative action board. Just to bring you up to date, we've had a number of resumes received. I think we're at 11 now, in addition to that, for other people who have expressed interest but have not submitted resumes. So I think we're going to be just on in terms of getting enough people out. And I have to say that the article in the paper was helpful, because after that, it started generating more people sending resumes and making phone calls. So it's going to be, looks good moving forward.
No actual required.
No, actually.
Do we have to have it for public hearing?
No, because we called for the hearing.
Yes, we already called for the public hearing. That's just an update. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Wallace, the golf course fertilizer pesticides and chemicals?
A couple weeks ago, the city went out to bid for the fertilizers, pesticides, and chemicals that are used on the golf course. We received five bids, which you have in front of you on the 11 by 17. We awarded the items selectively based on the price to three of the five, in the totals that you see on the last page. So we have some of John Deere, some of hair oils, and some of Helena totaling approximately This amount is within the budget.
Are there any questions?
I guess, looks really good. I like the, a lot of information to look through. Looks like a great assessment. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I think last time, well, we, it was too small.
Maybe that's the trick, right? I didn't do one of these, that's, yeah, right? So it was nice. So.
Good format.
Very good.
So we got multiple bids, right? So we had lots of bids.
And we did get some off of bid net this time. There were actually, I believe, two of the people who submitted bids were off of bid net.
New bidders that we haven't dealt with before?
I believe, yeah, Island Bio Greens and Growth Products were the two new ones, and they're the two that we did not go with, but there were issues that we didn't go with them. I mean, their prices weren't in line, but, you know, Island Bio Greens didn't kind of follow compliance on one of the things. But yeah, it was good on bid net this time.
Great.
Okay, all votes in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything else to come before Health and Recreation? If not, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn.
Call to order, Public Safety, Pedestrian Safety, Brandywine and Albany Street.
I was actually, I didn't actually put this one on. It was just a discussion item that was put on, I believe, by the committee, based off of a, I was not at it, based off of a council meeting. So I guess I'm here at, and John Caluccio is also here at the city, you know, at the council's discretion, if you'd like to ask questions or have anything. Kind of, there wasn't any backup with this, so.
Okay. Is there any way for lights to be, to lengthen the amount of time that people can cross? Because that's a lot of the lengths that we get, that there's not enough time for people to cross.
Certainly something that we can look at, to be honest, is to interject at this point, we are planning on putting pedestrian walklights at that intersection in-house. We won't do it in-house with our own staff during this construction season, so I think that'll help, I want to say resolve situations there, but improve the pedestrian safety by them being able to see the signals and know where to cross, as well as having vehicles know, I don't know about you, but a lot of people, as they're driving, they see the walklights, and it does really work for them, the fact that they shouldn't be, that they should be waiting while pedestrians are in opposing crosswalks. So we think that's important, and it's something we're going to do in-house.
Good, thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I know that recently we had a school safety day where the police kind of stepped up to pay a little more attention to school speed zones and passing buses with flashing red lights and things of that nature. As someone who crosses the street a minimum of two times a day in a lit crosswalk, you know, flashing yellow lights, cone in the center of the crosswalk, all of that, where someone unfortunately was killed by crossing legally, I can tell you that more times than not, cars go flying through that intersection regardless of whether you're in the middle of the street or not. I don't, I make it a point to make eye contact before I, you know. Is it, would it be possible, Mr. Mayor, to talk to the police about maybe doing some focus patrols on trouble walk areas, designated walk areas where there are flashing lights and people are supposed to stop no matter what, and do some ticketing to height and awareness, because people don't get it?
Yes, we can do that in some of the department, I should say some department, just an ongoing process now that Chief Pollock uses for the data-driven policing. And one of the thresholds for that is auto accidents. It's an interesting correlation where you have a higher number of auto accidents, you also have other criminal activity. And so when they do the statistical analysis, they pick out these spots, and then it's to employ the police back in that area, both with patrol and then other investigative resources to deal with some of the underlying problems. But yes, we can do that, and are doing it on an ongoing basis. If people have an area they would like looked at or intersection looked at, we're more than happy to do that. Again, this area from State, Brandywine, Albany, New York State, got quite a bit of focus actually on the State Street corridor. It's unfortunate that they, at this point, if I correct, don't seem to be willing to do some of the analysis a couple blocks off where Brandywine, what happens at State and Brandywine is nice, but we'd also like to look at Albany and Brandywine, where it gets to Duane, where you're going over the bridge, to do the full analysis. State, so far, has not done that, but we're looking at those numbers to see how we can mitigate some of the potential problems that there. John talks about making some of the changes in the lights, and then also, because of the high traffic, the delineation that's put down when we paint the crosswalks, you know, there are things that tend to wear off. So maybe they're supposed to try and do it once a year, have to do it twice a year to just make sure that they're properly marked and people can see them.
And Chris and I are still working with DOT to try to get them to look at that Brandywine corridor as part of this as well, but at least on time, we didn't feel we wanted to wait that long to do something, and that's why we're looking to put the walklights up ourselves. But certainly, there's, their interconnected corridors are both coordinated, and if you look at one, you really do have to look at the operation of the other one.
Yeah, there's been an ongoing problem with the school crossing where Van Collier Jr. High School, as I know the guards there complained over and over again that people just don't want to stop, so, I mean, there's a guard out there with a sign, people don't want to stop.
Is it? I thought we had put some patrol up there doing that, because some of the, what Parrazo's talking about, it's actually some grant money, but we've done that targeting specifically around schools, so that if people haven't gotten the message, we can, again, reallocate some of the patrol back there to do some of that enforcement.
You meant elementary, right? Elementary school?
Yeah.
Junior high, so.
Certainly, that on the other section, not sound like it. You change it so many times.
Little kids. I've seen police officers up there, too, in my baby drive.
We had added high-visibility signage at that location, because, you know, that we certainly have more complaints up there than from under there, so we tried to ensure that the signage was just enough.
Go ahead.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. We have had patrols on Van Collier and also on Elmer Avenue. Elmer Avenue's always been doing a great job. It's kind of getting the reputation in Elmer, it's like Niskun, you don't speed in Niskun because, you know, officers are just ahead, and they've really done a good job on Elmer School in particular. You talked about painting the lines in the crosswalks. Somebody mentioned, actually, Mr. Harvey, about, Harvey talked about the word "school" on Eastern Avenue before we actually hit Elmer Avenue to school. Is that our responsibility? I guess the decaying is all gone, it's just very faded, and somebody has said that it's the school district's responsibility to do that?
It's something that was put in several years ago with the paving contract, it's not a stencil we have, it's certainly something, you know, we have to look to purchase.
Can we do that, Mr. Mayor, and John? Because both, I guess at both ends, you really don't know where it's really starting or stopping, and I guess they really had stencil, quite large letters, and Mr. Harvey brought that up to me yesterday.
Or the pavement mark, and just only purchase a bunch of, you know, and certainly last longer than it was.
That's good. And then in regards to the Brandywine and Albany, the woman came to rail, I guess her son, unfortunately, it was a nighttime accident. And I drove through there a couple times during the week, and believe it or not, all those intersections that we have, John, that intersection has the lowest, the dimmest lighting. Now, again, I don't attribute it to the accident or not, whether it was a signal or just whatever, but is there a way we check the lighting as well in that thin area, John? Just to take a peek at that. Again, I don't know if it would make a difference or not, but it's much, much dimmer, it's noticeably dimmer than the other three intersections.
We're trying to enhance the safety in these intersections, so yes, we do want to have that.
Thanks for doing that, and Mr. Mayor as well. Thanks for getting the lights in, I think that's going to be a big help, because again, that's a major crossing for elementary school kids from that side of the street to get to Mount Pleasant Middle School, believe it or not. And we have a wonderful crossing guard over there, she has her own whistle and everything, and she does a great, great, great job, and I...
Mine uses it at night, too.
Yeah, I stopped over, so she does a great job for us. So again, thanks for doing it, John.
Certainly will. Chris, I'll keep you posted on the DOT project to try and let you know what's going on with that as well.
Any more comments, suggestions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Contract with Mohawk Ambulance, Mr. Olson.
Chairman, this contract actually expired at the end of last one. The fire department reviewed it, met with Mohawk, reviewed other scenarios for possible billing relationships, and at this point, I'm not sure if this is actually the version that was, or a couple of minor changes.
Those changes are made.
Recommend this at this point, with consideration of the council, to continue this, this contract, continues the relationship with Mohawk, where they would act as our billing agent. It's a six-month period where we lock into, and then it's revocable, maybe to probably leave it to 90 days. I think Mohawk has done an excellent job, and look to continue that relationship.
Oh, yes, I can answer any questions or not. We do have, as the mayor said, a 30-something year relationship with Mohawk Ambulance. We met with them in detail approximately two weeks ago. I'm very satisfied with their billing practices. We need to be a transporting agency to bill, which we are not, and we reviewed all the billing that we currently use them for, and I'm more than satisfied. We have talked to other agencies, however, we feel that Mohawk Ambulance has served us very well over the years, and will keep the business here local, right here in Skynect. Any questions that we haven't answered anything for?
No questions?
I'll move it.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
The folks from Mohawk aren't here, so.
Any other businesses for Public Safety?
People will adjourn.
All in favor?
Add please second to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, calls to order, Public Service and Utilities. Discussion about the water lateral program. Mr. Olson was going to bring us some options this time, so we can...
I think Paul had sent you a memo, that everybody receives.
Memo, did?
Yes. Oh, it just was here?
Thank you.
Any changes, or just same? No changes?
Yeah, because the memo that went out on April 2nd.
Can I make some copies for you?
Yes, I don't have it.
I don't.
Is that the old one that we had last time?
No, there's any one, the options.
I'll go see if I have it.
We've provided, I think there's four options that Paul has written up. You could do that, you could do other, there's other combinations, I suppose, that you can come up with.
I apologize, there's one typo in the memo, where it lists a number of ones, twos, and threes. Inadvertently, there's 28 three family units, there's 490 in the unit system, so, but there's roughly 16,013 properties that would fall under the category of one, two, and three.
We just, hold on, I don't know what you're working from, and I appreciate you moving up. There's nothing to tell me. I'm sorry.
I didn't get it either.
He's reading, and I don't know what to do.
Went out on the, on the second.
That's weird. That is weird. It gets weird.
Hiding it from us? Commercial break, let's go to the commercial here. Play the commercial, where's the commercial?
About 15 seconds, right?
Yeah. Oh, it was 30, wasn't it?
Nice you produced.
Oh, wait, there's coming over here.
It's coming, it's coming. There we go. All right. Yes, Paul, here we go.
Would you like a second to digest it, or?
No, we're good.
Yes. From our last meeting, you had asked for a couple of options that we could look at this lateral program, and we could come up with is four different options. The first option is what we spoke about in the previous meeting with regards to the Water Department, Sewer Department personnel performing the work on the first half of the services. It would be a fully paid service by the city. We would only be responsible from the main to the curb box, including the curb box and curb valve, or on a sewer lateral from the main to the property line. Anything beyond that still remain the responsibility of the property owner, and they would retain a licensed plumber to perform that work if it was broke, and what we'll call the out-of-the-right of way, or if the repair was made by the city personnel on that right of way, and the second half of that service was not up to current code. It may be a galvanized line or something else, and we would notify them that it would be up to them, their responsibility, and they would pay all costs to bring that up to code on the second half of the service. That's an option. The second option was mentioned in the memo from three weeks ago, where we could also charge for materials only. And permit fees, because we do rely on those permit fees to communicate. We would still recharge a service fee. The labor would be performed by the personnel of the Water and Sewer Department. Again, if there's a second half of the service that needs to be replaced or repaired, they would do that on their own. The difference, too, in this is either one of those options, the risk to the city or impact on the budget are high, because there are some times where you may get five service calls in one to two days. We have one crew, will be one heavy equipment operator that run the backlog, plumber's helper, and probably two laborers. We couldn't keep up with all that, so we would still have to find some mechanism to go to the other jobs, and that's where we would contract our backlog with outside contractors. If the city chose to do that, we would have to pay the cost for that labor to an outside plumbing contractor. We would reimburse our materials, but the labor would be an impact to the city. So both of those options would have a financial impact to the city. The third option would be to charge a fee for this service program. What the fee is, I ran some numbers, it could be $48, and with that, we could provide a full-service lateral program with regards to, the city would still take the responsibility of doing the first half of the program. Anything in the second half, we would pay a licensed contractor, plumbing contractor, to do the second half for us, because we don't want to work in the, out of the right of way, or bring that to code, or any backlog, and the fee structure could give us the finances to pay for that service or that contractor to do that work. As again in the previous memo, you know, it may take us a couple of years to figure out. Some years you may do 150 services, one year you might do 300. Will that fee cover it? I can't tell you. You know, over a period of time, we may figure it out. Of course, the fourth option, we don't do anything. We leave it like it is. It's been like that for years. Current city code is they're responsible. If you look at the bottom, over the last 15 months, we had approximately 140 service line permits issued, and out of that, we had only seven notices to vacate, which is about 7 percent that we had to vacate. There, I just got a mailing not long ago, there's a company in the area that's blanketing city residents for a service protection program, they're a private company. If the residents feel they want that... If the residents feel they want that protection, we remain unchanged, and they can purchase that protection outside.
I don't know if that covers them for the entire...
No, no. I don't know what the charges are, and I don't know what protection they get.
Because a lot of them only cover what is on a person's property.
But even if we know an institute a fee to do anything, if our costs go up over the next two years, we're going to see that in our operating budget, we're still going to pass it through to the residents through a rate increase. Somebody would still pay for it. If it's a program that you want to initiate, it has to be funded in some way, some means.
You could do, you could do a hybrid of both. Another option, you could charge a fee, and maybe the fee doesn't cover all of our costs, in which case, part of it is the fee, and part of it is paid for through increasing fees to everyone. In essence, you have to pay $2,000 if you need to have your lateral replaced or repaired. Is $2,000 going to cover all the costs? Maybe, maybe not. If it doesn't, the difference in expense is covered through your water fees, water and sewer fees that you pay. That way, an individual with a service will pay something, not as much as they have to pay now, and the rest is collected through their normal fees. In that type of scenario, if the individual did not have the $2,000, you can, the city would have the ability in the code to have the repair made and put that on their taxes, which would give them a couple of years to pay that, rather than come up with the money, hire a plumber, get it done, or I'm going to, in those seven instances, I have to evict you from your home. See, there's a number of different options for you to consider, and one of which is leave things exactly the way they currently are.
Some services are extremely expensive, well, as high as $10,000, depending on where the main is compared to the property line, or if it's a full service.
Well, sewer lateral, sewer lateral in Woodland, there's parts of Woodland where you need, you need to put in well points in order to dig a hole deep enough to get to your sewer lateral, which can be eight foot under the ground.
Because of groundwater.
Because of the water table, and the groundwater, you need to actually put in well points to dry up the ground enough to dig the hole so that you can put a trench box in it, and you can install a lateral. So a simple sewer lateral can cost $25,000 because of the very high water table. And we've had incidents of that, where people have got into it, plumbers have got into it, and then they didn't have the appropriate equipment, and they started losing the hole, being referred to it as losing the hole, where the hole starts, it just keeps caving in, and it just gets bigger and bigger, and we've had to go in and take over.
We've had to hire a private contractor to come in with well points and pump that groundwater up.
And make them pay for that, so...
The last option, like I said, is to leave everything unchanged. It's a very small percentage of people who can impact it. Whether you consider 10 people too many, or one person too many, that's a decision of the council.
I can assure you, even though you've only had to actually evict the property owners on seven or eight occasions, I personally think that's seven or eight too many, just about everyone that is informed that their service is broken has an extremely bad reaction. They're not, most people, I would say by far, the majority of people are not aware of the fact that they are responsible for that particular part of infrastructure. And when they find out, when do they find out? Usually, for the first time, when it's broken, and we're knocking on their door telling them, you got to get it fixed, it's got to get fixed, and then, if it's your water service, it's got to get fixed very quickly. Now, if you don't fix it, there's a negative impact that that creates for others. We've had incidents, I know for a fact, several of the council members received complaints over the winter about one that was running.
Front Street?
And it was running down North Ferry Street, into downhill, impacting a number of residents, because it wasn't being dug up and shut off. So again, these things can impact a number of individuals, not just the individual that has to fix it, but it can impact a number of other people on the street and create other situations that are difficult for us to have to deal with. This winter was a great example of it, because we had a very long hole, and the temperatures were below freezing for the majority of the winter. So any service leaks would freeze up, build ice, we'd have to cut ice, we'd have to go and provide salt to those areas practically nightly to keep them from becoming a hazard or danger.
Ms. Wilson? First of all, thank you for your work on this, because we keep revisiting it, and I hope we can kind of slog through it, because I do, I've had phone calls, we've had emails, all of us. As a single homeowner, working for a nonprofit, the idea of my lateral going scares the heck out of me. I would have to take a loan to afford that, and there are people that don't have those resources available. I support anything we can do to help the homeowner and have it be more affordable for them, but the set fee across the board to all of the residents also makes me a little bit nervous. Is there a possibility where we could put a surcharge on to the jobs that we do and create like a pool of money if we had to go outside of city services so that we have like a reserve? So say, you know, it's the cost of the labor and materials plus 10%, and that 10%...
You have a flat fee, as I said, you could say, you got to pay $1,500, you got to pay a certain amount. I can assure you, just the permit fee alone is what, 400?
About $320, $350 per time you get the plumbing permit, the inspection fee, and then...
That's already budgeted revenue. That's already in your system, and you don't want to, if you were to drop that, you would have to make up that revenue.
I don't think the city should take a hit either, right? So if the job costs $3,000, I don't think, and we have a flat fee of $1,500, but I'll ask my colleagues to consider paying for the exact cost that it costs the city, plus maybe a percentage, that we could create a pool so that if we needed to hire outside of the city because we had five break at once, we would have that reserve of money. But that surcharge only charged to the people that use the lateral program, not every resident across the board.
And some people have just replaced theirs, so they're going to say, well, I don't want to have to pay, because mine is brand new. On the other hand, if you're paying $50 a year, you would, if you think about it, if you did the math, it's a good deal, it's a great deal, because chances are that one of these things is going to cost you three grand, right? That's 60 years' worth. So you'd have to pay for 60 years, $50 a year to get to that $3,000. So it's a lot more affordable to pay $50 a year than it is to have to come up with that kind of cash overnight, in particular, when people don't even know, in many instances, that that's their responsibility.
And most of these services are full services, because the services that are going bad are not newer copper services that are in, they're the old leaded services. When you do the first half, you do have to bring it to the state health court, and you have to do the second half. And that's where you learn the problem where, you know, putting a city crew up next to a building, digging by a foundation, or on private property is what we, you know, I'd like to avoid. I don't want that risk and liability to fall back on city personnel when they're...
Even though the sewer lateral is usually a point repair, you don't necessarily have to replace it, it also is deeper. Sewer is deepest, so that being the case, depending on the conditions with groundwater, as I mentioned earlier, or shale, clay, there are areas of the city that's going to be more difficult to dig than other areas where it's going to cost, there's going to be differences in expense.
Mr. Bojic?
Thank you. One of my main questions is, what is your overall cost for the program? Hiring the four individuals, the backhoe? Do we have an idea?
The excavator has already been purchased, and it's used on a daily basis now. I do have a breakdown, I do have a spreadsheet that shows the cost, that shows roughly, copper's roughly $5 a foot now. I do have a spreadsheet that I built that shows all the costs. It's built around a $48, it's $1.63 for sewer per month, and two something, but it adds up to $48 a year. Then all the costs come out of that based on materials, and then we made some assumptions that the second half would be about $2,000 to do a second half of a service, which is probably the growing rate for plumbers right now. Some may be higher, some may be lower, but for an average of about $2,000.
I'm talking about our manpower, our personnel that we have to hire. What is it going to cost this department in additional to hire these?
I have that as a spreadsheet, I can email it to everyone.
That's what I asked for at the last meeting.
Like I tell you right now, an operator is about $55,000 a year plus benefits?
About $80,000 for a heavy equipment operator with benefits. You can have three MEO mediums at probably about $160,000, and you can have a plumber's helper, and it's probably about $48,000 plus 51% benefits. So you get two, over $200,000 in labor costs to run that program.
The total cost of the program itself is $750 a year, $800 a year. If you take $48 and multiply it times, you have a memo in front of you, and if you're $48 per household, there's 16,000.
$700,000.
13 households. I'm still not in favor of charging every homeowner a fee. I mean, we had, we raised, heck, when we raised, when we put the garbage fee in there, I can only imagine what this is going to do now, when we're adding an additional $48 to seniors and those who earn fixed incomes. I understand your situation that you're talking about, as Amer, we just got an email today from a lady on Manchester, or I'm sure everybody, and I actually drove by the house, and I know the woman, and I feel bad for her, there's no question, it's her service.
Between the curb and the...
There's no question.
And again...
We would be just perfectly happy leaving things exactly as they are.
Because in that case, we wouldn't want to do that, because it's between the curb box and the home, and we don't want to dig on some...
So she would still have to get a plumber anyway?
Yes.
Or you can... Mr. Holm, Mr. Holm, let me just finish my comments before I lose my train of thought. Thank you. I contacted Talaniski, and also, what do they do with their water service lines? And if a homeowner cannot afford to have it repaired by a licensed plumber, they will actually dig it up for them, make the repairs, and they bill it directly, as like we said, to their tax bill, and that'll give them four payments to make the payments, or they will extend it, depending on how far the water line is. That is what my question was, you know, what is it going to cost the city additional in the budget? Do we put, allow this in the budget? And again, we have some very tight fiscal constraints on this right now, so that's what I was wondering, where we are, what that budget process goes, that was involved in that in 13 hours.
That is another change that you could make to code, because right now, as far as city code goes, we don't have that liberty. So if you, you have to hire a plumber. If you don't have the money to do that, we have to cut your service. We don't have the ability to hire the plumber for you, have the work performed, pay for that, and then put it on your tax bill. I will caution you that the majority of individuals will, or a large number of individuals may not pay that bill, in which case it goes uncollected, in which case it becomes an expense for the fund division as a whole, in which case everyone pays to cover that expense. But again, our code doesn't give us that luxury.
There are some programs available. I mean, better neighborhoods, social services has some programs. Based on their income, they have to be up to date in their taxes, and it has to be a, they have to reside in the property. A lot of the services that we sent notices out are not up to date in their taxes, they don't live in them, and, you know, if you put it on the tax bill, are we going to get it back?
Ms. Erickson?
Mr. Bojic, you brought up a good point. So when you're talking town, does the town actually go up to the house, or they just do it to the curb?
All the way in, they'll do it all the way.
The town's willing to go on private property, and the city were not willing to do that.
At least this unit does.
Right, so we could maybe ask them what their experience is, how many times have they messed up someone's landscaping, or damaging the foundation, the cost. It may be interesting comparison between the two. The other question I had is, if we're doing the lateral from the main to the curb, replacing that, you said they have, now we have to go right to the house, is there any way that we could just, if the leak is between the main and the curb, just fix that and not force them to repair the rest of it?
No. See, one, because under the state code, they're trying to remove all the lead in the houses, and it's the same things we follow now, like any valves we buy, anything we do now in our distribution system has to be lead-free. What they're trying to do is remove the lead that's leaching from, not really our main pipes, but a lot of the house pipes. So a lot of these services are all leaded joints, or galvanized, and that leaches into the water system of the house. So, you know, they have to bring that to code. When that service goes, you're touching it, it's sort of like when we do work at the plant, if we repair something or make a change, we have to bring that up to fire codes and everything else, you're touching it. So we do have to bring it up to code, or the homeowner has to bring it up to code.
So another question then is, what percentage of the city has been upgraded to copper? We should be able to track that.
We don't know.
Well, based on permits, right? We could probably go back.
You can go back and try and figure out how many permits were pulled.
Copper's been used since, when did we start using copper? 80s, 70s?
70s.
70s.
So figure 150 per year for the past 30 years. So that would be, are we 500 services out of 17,000? So there's still a number of them that are all, I would say the majority without question are not copper services.
Two-thirds are not copper.
I would say that could be, that could be, because again, these are just...
Rough numbers.
Rough numbers, just thinking about the average of the number that actually get replaced.
Mr. Ricky?
My concerns are kind of mirror Mr. Colgers and Mr. Erickson's, with a fee that we'll put on if we do this, a fee, yearly fee for everyone. I agree that it's, like the garbage fee, which has doubled since 2004, we keep talking $48, how is this going to stay the same every year, year, year? Materials go up, copper's been going up, it hasn't been going down, that's for sure. My water service in 1980 that I was forced to replace, cost, I think, $1,200 at that time, you know, and then it went to $3,000 30 years later. So is that $48 going to be forever? I don't see how it can be. You know, when you own a home, unfortunately, there's things you have to replace. How about your roof? That's $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000, isn't it? Where do we draw the line on we take care of homeowners? Unfortunately, what we have is, we have people in homes that really can't afford to be homeowners, that's one of the problems that we're facing. So there's a line that has to be drawn somewhere, so what can we do and what can't we do? But I have a problem with a yearly fee for everyone to pay into this, because our water rates are very high right now compared to some communities, I think we're above $10,000 or Rotterdam. I think Rotterdam's about half of what we are.
It was $25 a year, so it was being supplemented by their general fund. Our water rates in the city of Skentie are very low, very low.
You can't compare it to Rotterdam.
Rotterdam was not coming close to covering their cost, that's a very, they are cheaper. They're cheaper than anyone on earth, $25 per house, they just raised them to, I don't know what, but that would be a very...
But again, Ms. Wilson, with a fee, that's not exemptable for seniors and veterans, that's not exemptable.
And again, I don't, I don't really care what...
I understand, I'm not saying that you don't, I'm just making my point, that's all. A fee is not exemptable. That goes on, everybody pays the same amount. There's no break for seniors, or no break for veterans, or disabled, that's not in there, so everybody's going to pay the same, which is fair. Nobody's subsidizing any, I don't say it isn't fair, but that's just the basis of it, and we have people right now that can't pay their taxes as it is. So if we're going to raise taxes, I think we're going to be foreclosing on more houses, but they will have new lateral centers, and we do that.
The flip side of that is, the same people that can't afford $50 a year certainly are going to have a very difficult time affording $3,000 or $4,000 when it comes their way.
But you mentioned, a lot of these people with the problems, they're in arrears in their taxes, so they wouldn't come under this anyhow. We wouldn't be able to put it on their tax bill if they owe money, so it's kind of...
That's terrible.
Why the last option was?
That's the last option was to leave things exactly the way they are.
Thoughts from the council? I mean, I'm here, yes. Well, I think we all agree, you know, that we're uncomfortable with the fee. Yes, we are. But I still think it's worth, if we can do, if we can save our homeowners some money by the city doing the work, that's a good thing in any respect, because we have people that can't afford to live in a house, but we're not going to put, you know, illegal people out on these streets, you know, so if we can help without the city taking a hit, I think that would be a good thing. So getting back to my initial suggestion, would anybody consider trying to figure out how we can charge exactly for the cost that the city incurs, plus a small surcharge that would create a reserve if we need, if the city can't handle the workload in, you know, at one point or another? I mean, is that anything anyone would consider talking more about?
So if, I'm just trying to understand your question, so you're saying that if my lateral goes and it costs $3,500 to do, I would hire the city, or the city would do it and charge me four, so that...
Well, the city's going to be able to do it less expensively because of the...
Talking about that cost.
Right, so it's at cost.
Sounds like they're going to have five guys now, so six guys working versus...
I'm saying at cost, I mean, obviously, if it's more expensive to have the city do it, then why are we talking about this program, right? It's less expensive to have the city do it for the homeowner.
I don't know.
Or, so Mr. Olson and Mr. Lefan have told us.
Depends if you're going to look at time and material.
To be very honest with you, we have to charge all of our costs, so I have to charge for permits. Permits, I've got to charge for benefit costs, I've got to charge the hourly rate, I've got to charge all the materials, and I'm going to mark it up, I am no different than the plumber.
They're going to save money for the plumber. They're gonna save money for the homeowners.
Right. It doesn't help you, I'm no different than the plumber. The only difference is, I could put it on your tax bill, the plumber cannot, that's the only difference.
Which we can maybe do.
Yeah, and I said, when you look at it.
Maybe there's extenuating circumstances.
Needs to be revamped, you can look at it and you can make some changes, like Ed has recommended. It gives us a little bit more flexibility, that maybe allows us to be able to help people if they are, they fit into a certain category, maybe that, maybe one of those conditions is you've gotta be current on your taxes.
Well, yeah.
Because, I mean, if you're two years in the arrears, we don't wanna have to fix your lateral so that you can not pay us, and everybody else has to kind of cover the cost of that. But again, that could come out of a complete, when you're looking at the code and the, how it discusses water, the first thing, and how to revamp that.
So, sounds to me like an opportunity to kind of find a hybrid solution here. If people who couldn't afford to do it, maybe we have CDVG funding, right? We have some money, we have a public hearing about where we're gonna spend it, maybe doing lateral program would be the way to do it. Lateral program, sidewalk program, both.
I just wanna throw out also, because sometimes you're talking, just going to the boundary line, sometimes you're talking about going into the house. If you go into the house, the odds are our insurance is gonna go up.
This is what I would recommend, if you want, again, this is another solution for you, we, as the city, if the code were to be changed, we as the city could hire a plumber to do the whole thing. Whatever section has to be done, the whole thing, half the thing, whatever it has to be.
We am, I said, we're not with tax.
We could, and then if they can't pay us, we apply it to their tax bill. We would, you would only get that, that option if you were current on your taxes, so there's probably a pretty good chance that we're going to be able to get that money over two or three years, however long you'd allow people.
Next bill's gonna be a year later anyway, so, you're not gonna get the bill for it.
Again, that would enable us to be able to do that. You could have a small reserve in the water fund set aside, a fees-for-service line, it's in your fees-for-service category, where a plumber could be hired to perform that work. We could have plumbers submit time and material charges in advance, so we know what their time and material charges would be. Obviously, you would give it to the person with the lowest time and material charge that qualifies with the appropriate insurance, and so forth. Guess what? That person may not be available when you need them. So you would need a group of plumbers that would be willing to participate, you would need to get their T and M charges in advance, and the city inspector would have to accompany them to make sure that what they're billing us is what they actually perform, like we do in any other construction project, in which case we then reimburse the plumber and we add it to the person's tax bill. That is an option. That would require modification of the code. And again, I would suggest you look at that code in its entirety, because it is older than all of us in the room together. It talks about liveries and, I mean, I'm waiting to see a horse tied up to a.
And that's exactly what I want to do, Chair and Madam President, if we could maybe table this and maybe do a subcommittee to really work on the revamping the entire code, bring it up to date where we wanna do, get, I don't know how many, we can do a subcommittee, how many we can have on the committee, I certainly like to chair that if I, if I may. But let's work on this, work out the details, we'll work with everybody within the council as we're moving along on this code, because the discussion's gone on too long, I mean, we're certainly not gonna do, move on this today, and as we all agree on the code is old and we have to update it, but we can possibly do that, Madam Chair and Miss President?
It's fine, it's a great idea.
That's okay with you guys? I'm certainly gonna be able after vacation break, and we can set some dates and run our, whatever.
Just a quick question, as another possible option, can the city, we're gonna hire a plumber, let's say we're gonna use plumbers, we're not gonna do this, but can the city do the street cut and then do the backfilling and fill it in afterwards, so we know that's done properly? Because that's been a problem through the years where it's not done properly, that would save some money maybe on the job.
If you have the appropriate staff to do that. So depending on the numbers that you had to do, our guys do not deal with one in services, our guys deal with mains. That's, we have licensed plumbers that are required to come in and do taps to the mains and services. So it would depend on the number that we had to do, whether or not we needed additional staff with that particular expertise to perform the work. To be very honest with you, I think it was gonna be extremely difficult for us to find any plumber that would be, that would want to work for us to perform the work.
They don't want to work for you, you mean?
We can't find an electrician.
Yes, Ms. Wilson, well, the impact on our budget is something that we would need to know too, before putting out money and amortizing that over tax bill, what does that look like at our, you know, our cash flow? And I think we need to hear from Mr. Ginova, if we're just going to have it.
Definitely, you suggested, I think finance should definitely be a factor.
Absolutely, we want to get the whole thing for you.
Make sure that we understand the impact.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right. Well, thank you, the thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, you know, just while we have Mr. Olson here, and we're still on this committee?
Um, I'll, I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And I'll say it, is there anything else to come before?
I'm gonna walk out of here, I can totally. Can we do it on data, and I saw they're starting to fill some of the potholes in today, is that air holes, that's, I'm sure they're air holes.
We've been filling potholes in weeks. I just start today by any means.
All right.
We actually have hot mix available. So we are utilizing hot mix. I think this is probably one of our biggest pothole seasons that we've had as a result of the winter that we've had. So that people understand, we get a number of particular poor potholes, we appreciate that, put them on a list, we try to get them out there as quickly as possible. But we would, the most efficient way of performing the work is to go out and look at your streets that have the highest traffic. Highest traffic counts where people are traveling at the highest rate of speed, because those are the situations where you can do the most damage to a vehicle. We fill those holes first, we try to, we would like to be in a perfect world, that's what we would do. So you would go from your highest volumed traffic roads with the most, the highest speeds that are being, like Erie Boulevard, for example, is probably one of the highest traffic volume, and that people go at a higher rate of speed than they maybe even should. And then you work your way from there. So if it is a dead end of Washington Avenue, it's gonna wait a little longer, it probably can wait a little longer than if it is Albany or anyone.
How about the Lawrence Street? I ran into Mike Saron, he said they were gonna do that the next day, but it didn't happen.
We're gonna mill, and that's another instance, I want people to understand that a pothole's.
He said it's gonna be milled.
Pothole's gotta be a certain depth before material's going to adhere well to it. You can't just go out and skim code. You're driving down the road, it's a rough ride, and it shouldn't be there, we should mill it out and reapply the surface, but you need a milling machine to do that. We'll get to that. A lot of the potholes that we're currently patching, I think Altamont Avenue is a great example, if you go Altamont Avenue, or underneath the bridge heading towards D'Agostino Block, a little shorter section of Altamont.
Stone City.
It's pothole after pothole, it's patch up to patch up to patch up to patch up. So it looks more like a patchwork quilt. That little section should be milled out in its entirety, and you should put one patch over it. We will get back to those areas to perform that work. I think you've seen us do that in the past few years, we have a small milling machine, we can go out and do that. So for right now, we wanna get out and get hot patching as many holes as we can where it will adhere, and then again, once, as the summer progresses, we'll go back, cut areas out, and do a better job where you're, where it's gonna have a more long-lasting effect.
I guess there was maybe a change in plan, because he offered that to me, I didn't ask, he said we're gonna do the Lawrence Street tomorrow, we're gonna mill it, and so it might have been a change.
And it was probably in schedule.
It was last week.
Scheduling with the milling machine. So, I saw the same thing, and I haven't gotten around to asking why that didn't happen yet, but it will. I mean, the Lawrence Street's a great example, they're not deep, the holes are not deep. If you're going the speed limit, as you should be going, it's a little rough ride, it's not gonna hurt anyone. On the other hand, you can't leave it that way, that road is, it's horrible, it needs to be milled and, and the asphalt needs to be replaced. It would be lovely to have more money in our paving program to be able to pave our roads. I'll take advantage of my opportunity for that pitch, but again, we try to do what we can, do what we have. Working overtime doesn't really work, because again, you have to have availability of material this time of the year, you only have one plant, it's over and buttered, it isn't the normal local plant that we use, there's only one plant available, so it's more difficult to obtain the material, you can't get material on a Saturday unless you order a significant amount. These things will change over the next few weeks, more plants will open, it becomes more readily available, so it gives us the opportunity to work a little overtime if it is necessary at that point. We would like to be able to avoid that, if we can, do as much work as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before public service and solutions?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right, I'll call to order city development and planning, consolidated plan times, so Mr. Fergat?
Thank you, Madam Chair, please allow me to adjust the mood lighting. You want candles or what?
Everybody get their Austin brand.
There we go. It's always the rite of spring when I get to present the mayor's proposed consolidated plan. And this year, we're proposing the 2014 fiscal year plan. And just in terms of perspective, this chart shows block grant, community development block grant, CDVG funding from 2004 through our new 2014 allocation. And you can see, between 2010 and 2011, there was a 20% reduction. We lost $555,000 right here in this year. For 2013, we got 2.1 million, for 2014, we're getting almost the same, shy of about $16,000. Switches are too bad. So this year, we're getting in new block grant money, $2,93,518. The next slide shows anticipated available funding, this is our total budget, using the three federal programs that have funds. And again, the first one is the community development block grant. The figure I just mentioned, the block grant will fund 22 different programs and projects, I'm gonna just very quickly go through those. We also have prior years recaptured funding, at almost $272,000. That's basically derived from projects that have been deleted or projects that had balances in the block grant. We also get program income from the block grant. And these two sources are basically economic development loan repayments. And you can see, one is, we're anticipating $25,000 from the local development corporation, which is no longer in business. And then we have, again, loan repayments, we're estimating $16,000 from economic development fund, loans that we made in the past. The block grant funds housing activities, infrastructure, public service activities, economic development activities, and also administration activities. And it's our most flexible federal program, so we love the community development block grant. Emergency solutions grant, this, this grant deals with the prevention of homelessness. So you're gonna see a lot of activities that prevent homelessness in the city, and the new amount happily is, there's a 22% increase from 2013, so there's an increase of, it's about $31,000 over 2013, so that's very good. Home investment partnerships, also good news there, we're up 12% over 2013, we're getting about $40,000 plus more dollars here in this, in home money. Home money's used for development of affordable housing. There's also program income related to the home program. This amount here, anticipated program income, comes basically from the sales of affordable houses. And that, and we're, we're the participating jurisdiction, we're the lead entity in a home consortium consisting of Town and Colony, City of Troy, and the city of Schenectady. So if Troy sells a house, we get that, we get some of that program income. And then lastly, the Schenectady Housing Development Fund Corporation, this is our down payment assistance program, and this is anticipated $8,000 in loan repayments coming back. So you add all this up, we get $3,342,896. Emergency solution grant recommendations, and we have five of those, these are basically primarily staff costs. Bethesda House Homeless Housing and Eviction Prevention Program, recommending $30,000. This is outreach and case management activities to secure permanent housing for the homeless. Bethesda House Day Program Drop-In Center, and this goes way back to, I believe, 1996 we've been funding this. But this is for homeless services at their State Street facility. Safe House Manager Counselor, $33,491, and this pays for emergency shelter for homeless youth. Schenectady Community Action Program, Homeless Prevention Court Advocacy Program, we're recommending $60,000 again for staff costs. This primarily pays for legal services for the homeless. And then CARES Incorporated, this is the homeless management information system, it's a data, the data retrieval system that we're required to contribute to. Community development block grant money, the first category up is economic development, and you can see we're recommending $40,000 in block grant money for the community loan funded the capital region. There are community economic development Schenectady programs, and this will also leverage over $600,000 in lending capital and technical services, basically for job creation in the city of Schenectady. And if you remember, I think it was several weeks ago, they had the satellite opening at the community business center on Almond Street, and we would be funding a staff person, the staff at Satellite Center. Public service neighborhood revitalization strategy area recommendations at $118,608. This pertains to, if block grant money, you're capped at, public services activities are capped at 15%, you can't go higher than that. Because these organizations are community-based development organizations, or CHOOs like Better Neighborhoods, Community Housing Development Organizations, they're exempt from that 15% cap, which is a good thing for these organizations. Primarily, these organizations serve the old enterprise community area, which includes Hamilton Hill and Central State Street, three census tracts. So we're recommending Better Neighborhoods, gets $54,000 for their home buyer education or foreclosure prevention program. This is basically a housing counseling program, and they're the only HUD certified program in the area. Hamilton Hill Art Center Project Outreach, we've been paying the executive director salary at $14,608, the same as last year. This provides art programming in the summer primarily. Next, TAV, minority contractors technical assistance program, we're recommending $50,000. This is for staff costs and some amount of personnel costs, provides technical assistance, certification, and onsite training, primarily geared towards minority contractors in the construction trade. We have. You're going backwards. What? That's what?
Table?
Public service. You have seven of these. And these public service recommendations are subject to that 15% cap that I mentioned previously. We're recommending that we fund, we're under the 15% cap, at $299,989. And we have seven activities we're recommending. First one is Boys and Girls Clubs, it's Schenectady, they're quite a community park recreational and educational program, that includes the pool. It's being funded at the same level as last year, $26,136. There's $4,000 extra dollars though, this is a new, new project that's being proposed. They would undertake Steinmetz Park management. And what that would be for $4,000, it would be paying for a staff person who works 18 to 20 hours per week, and facilitates the use of the park. So we think, the Northside Neighborhood Association came up with that, and they would work in close conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club for that program. The second activity, same level of funding as 2013, at $6,000, they're named Dominos as a capital district senator independence. They, man, our office of disability service office on the ground floor in City Hall are open five days a week. Second, New City Ministry, they're very successful, Sonata Lunch program, and it's same level of funding as last year, $5,000. The Schenectady County Youth Bureau, this is for helpers in Steinmetz parks, in its same, last year's level, $43,233. The same thing for the Schenectady Police Department, the Community Policing Program, where we partially fund seven community police officers, serving Hamilton Hill, Mount Pleasant, and Central State Street. The Schenectady County Youth Bureau, this is for helpers in Steinmetz Parks, and it's same, last year's level, $43,233. The same thing for the Schenectady Police Department, the Community Policing Program, where we partially fund seven community police officers, serving Hamilton Hill, Mount Pleasant, and Central State Street, recommending $164,838. And then you have the YMCA Jerry Brown Drop-In Summer Program, $30,224, the same level as last year, along with the YW's Aquatic Pool Program at East Front Street Park, $20,250. Public Works Recommendations. We have five of those. Code Enforcement Program Delivery, this is partial funding for 16 positions, providing co-enforcement in the city of Schenectady. In terms of removal of lighting conditions, the Department of Neighborhood Revitalizations, Schenectady Neighborhood Assistance Program, the SNAP Program, we're recommending $370,000 for that, and that would fund, partially fund 14 positions. Community Development Program Delivery, this funds a half, this funds half a person, primarily focusing on the implementation of what's recommended in the Conreheensive Plan, the 2020 Plan, in the Department of Development, and this is salary plus benefits. Engineering Department, Street Rehab Program. This would allow for the street rehabilitation of half a mile of street, recommending in the Central State Street neighborhood, $426,92. And this would include the street, curves, sidewalks, and trees. So it's a total rehab. Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program, this is for property acquisition along with, in conjunction with demolition. And last year, we had $56,000 in the budget. This year, we have the same amount. And if, remember, the idea is we couple this with $100,000 we're getting from the county for demolition purposes. And what that does, $156,000 per year pays for the principal and interest of a $3 million loan for 20 years. That's how we get that amount. Housing Assistance Recommendations. This is, pertains to both the block grant, CBG, and the Home Investment Partnerships Program, recommending over $751,000 worth of effort. Better Neighborhoods Incorporated Operating Funding, this falls on your, the home part falls under a 5% cap that we can give them. This is for general overhead funding, similar to the Community Land Trust of Schenectady, they have operating funding too, because there are two community housing development organizations, or CHOBOs. And they are the two housing providers that we have in the city of Schenectady. So we want to fund them, giving them some operating funding. The Community Land Trust of Schenectady has a housing counseling administration component. This is for a person located at the land trust who does housing counseling. The land trust also has a homeowner rehabilitation program. There have been a couple of this, 100, over $100,000 with $400,000 in New York State funding. So they're going to be able to rehab 10 homeowner occupied homes. Lastly, in this slide, the Schenectady Housing Development Fund, this is anticipated program income, as mentioned before, $8,000 for the second mortgage program loan repayments. Habitat for Humanity, Carey Street 2-1 conversion, and also another Habitat for Humanity, new build affordable housing project, both related. They refer to the 1,500 block on Carey Street. The idea is, we're going to demolish three buildings there, and then you're going to be building two new construction. And this includes two new construction structures, and this also includes demolition and site preparation. Here Habitat for Humanity is going to conduct a 2-1 diversion. They're going to build the house themselves. Here, they're partnering with Northeast Parent and Childs, a new build program, to put up a second house for $97,871. They also have a Habitat for Humanity as a neighborhood revitalization program, we're recommending $105,000 in home money for that. And that's also their focuses at the north side, and that would be for a weatherization, mainly a weatherization program. Better Neighborhoods, Homeowner Renovation Program, this is kind of a neat program, $100,000 for this proposed program. And this would target persons with disabilities, and you're correcting the codes, code issues to make sure they're, they can maintain their independence longer. So this is kind of a neat, I like this program a lot. Better Neighborhoods Incorporated Affordable Housing Program, this is program delivery, a program delivery amount on a per-project basis, same as last year, $50,000. And then Bethesda House, the Rapid Housing Eviction Subsidy Fund, what this is, is a tenant-based rental assistance program, pay for security deposits and other rental assistance. Very successful program. And lastly, we get to the administrative costs, because to run a program, we need some administrative overhead for coordination and management. The first project that's recommended is $51,000 in block grant money to Schenectady County, continuing their affirmative action minority recruitment and contract compliance function, pays for staff costs. Department of Development Administration Costs, you can see here, there are three, the three federal categories, the three federal programs, we can get some administrative money from each program. The name of it is the block grant. Obviously, this pays for five persons, partially and wholly within the Department of Development, and also non-personnel costs. And then $25,000, they're recommending in block grant money for the finance department similar to last year, that's an overhead cost. And we are, this does have a 20% cap, we are under that 20% cap for administrative services. For more information, please contact me, I'm Richard Perga at Community Development, phone number 3825147. You can fax me at 3825275, or email me at rperga@schenectady.ny.com. Tomorrow, there's going to be a full-page display ad in the Gazette outlining this whole program, the proposed program for 2014, in terms of the allocations and who gets funded for what. That'll be in tomorrow's paper. There will be a 30-day combat period, this is a HUD requirement, beginning April 9th and going through May 8th. And then, we're requesting tonight to have a public hearing in front of City Council at the April 28th council meeting. And then, for the, the proposed 2014 consolidated plan, hopefully would be adopted May 12, at May 12, formal City Council meeting, as the final 2014 consolidated plan. And that gives me three days to put it together and submit it to HUD Buffalo by May 15.
Questions?
The font looks perfect, Dick. You can't see it from this.
John must help you put that together.
No questions at this point?
Just one, I guess, I'm looking here, you had like six new applicants that didn't get funded, or were those...
We, we have an assessment of each application we receive. We look at what's being proposed, what's the likelihood of their success, and then the cost factors. We look at the assessment program based on those three factors. Some are better than others.
All right, so, Ms. Porterfield?
When we're looking at this in terms of who we're funding and who we're not funding, and level, I mean, are we taking into consideration the outcomes over the years?
Yes.
And does that affect the level of funding that they're getting?
Absolutely. That's part of our assessment.
So everyone's then, then leaving their outcomes?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So no one's funds for anywhere in that?
I mean, there's, there are always, every agency's not perfect. And we work with those, we want to improve them, their capacity. Everybody knows Jeff Fonda, our monitor, and, you know, he monitors once a year, plus we get quarterly reports from every agency.
Okay, I know that Carver Community Center, which is not operating right now, so, and normally they're funded from this?
They, they...
And normally, I understand, they're not funded this year, I understand that. What happened to the funding that normally is allocated? Because I'm not sure where...
We removed it, it's, it's in the mix, it's part of that.
So the other similar programs, did they, were they able to benefit from that unfortunate?
We, I mean, it's, it's in, we, I specifically took that amount from last year. I believe it's around $14,000. And I put it in the mix of public service funding and, you know, these ready eligible activity, block grant activity.
So there's not specific place that went this year?
Other questions? Ms. Parazov?
Can you email us your questions?
Sure, absolutely.
One of the key things when you start to look at moving money around is the different categories and the caps. Yes. Yep. All right, thank you.
So, is code enforcement, this is 17 members, are there 17 people currently in codes?
There are, yes. Yeah, partially funded, partially funded. We, we fund a lot of those positions, we fund about 75%.
Okay.
Because that 75% covers the low and moderate income area, areas.
Right, no, I understand that, but I just didn't realize there were 17, 17 people in codes.
Yep.
Ms. Porterfield?
Well, this is, it's sort of out of CBG, but initially, we thought that the loan fund would be out of the 101 home.
That's a very good, very good observation.
Yes, but now, so, in terms of that, where did that, the extra $40,000, how would that be used in the 101 home fund process now?
That $40,000 sort of be used, we were told by HUD, and when they were reviewing it in Washington, we were told that was ineligible use of, of Section 101.
Were they specific as to why?
The $40,000, not really, just that it's against their regulations, so.
We have not gotten the actual loan documents. I tried to make contact this morning, haven't heard back. So, in what I call kind of the dynamic review, we're still looking to figure out the criteria. We originally thought we could, but telling us we can't.
So we'll find out once we get the loan documents?
Correct.
Ms. DiGenova wanted to comment.
Just a clarification for Mr. Perga upstairs. If you look at your budget for codes, you'll see that there's 16 full-time positions, but there's also a per-geant position, that's probably what Dick is referring to. So I didn't want people to go back and look at the budget, but there's 16, but there's also a seasonal line in the figures.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon, Aaron.
You have funding aside for the greenhouse, greenhouse, greenhouse?
We don't, we don't. There's no, no green, new green, affordable green housing money in this budget. We have some...
Are you, wait a minute, are you talking? Green, is that, okay, sorry.
No, no. The only new construction would be habitats and everything you can build, house.
All right, so start giving some thought to what, you know, you don't want to fund, or where you want to make changes, and other things you do want to fund, so we've got time to, you know, play around with it a little bit, and see what's what, so. Okay, again, thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
You're still in motion on a call for the public hearing.
Resolution to call for the public hearing.
Right, yep, yep. So I will undertake a motion to call for the public hearing, okay? Moved, second. Ms. Porterfield?
Oh.
Call for the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
It's Autism Awareness Month, so I think it would be appropriate for us to do a resolution for that.
I'll move it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We've got a public hearing coming up on the name change for the part of Norwood Avenue. There was a very nice article in the Gazette today about that, so. Ms. Porterfield? Actually, you don't need to, we've already called for the public hearing, so it's just a, you know, the public hearing will be next week.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Okay. One of the reasons that we're having these items on the agenda the week before the public hearing is as a tickler. We are required to have the legislation in the clerk's office for public viewing on a particular date, whatever the date in the resolution calls. Sometimes that falls between the cracks. So that's one of the reasons that I've been putting these on in between. So there's no action required. Sometimes we don't have that legislation, or even a draft of that legislation, council hasn't decided, and we're up to the public hearing. So that's the reason that they're not hearing.
Could you put maybe a no action required or the acronym for it next to those?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Good idea. Okay. And then the ceremonial resolution, Ms. Parazov, for...
Yes, Mr. Gereo from Nico's Pizza, just like to have him recognized for his community involvement. He donates pizza to the youth probation team on a regular basis, whether they're working for municipal housing, or, so Department of Juvenile Justice wanted to recognize him, the Municipal Housing Authority wanted to recognize him. I wanted to recognize him for providing pizza after our youth panel where the graffiti said that, let's just do it all together. So always good to recognize a member of our community who gives back and who's very generous.
Yes.
All right, so.
Yeah, it means good pizza. So I'll move that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
If there's nothing else to come before city development and planning, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn?
Will be adjourned.
Okay. Porterfield, second by Ms. Parazov, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will call to order government operations, Vale Cemetery proposed easement, Mr. Paul Stare.
You have in your packet a drawing from an architect or engineer outlining the proposed easement. And it starts on, I don't have my glasses, but, I have them, and what this is going to do, it only needs to cross city property, very short area, but it's going to allow them to put in a gas line for natural gas back to the sanatorium. And right now, they're using propane, which is extremely expensive, and this will allow the cemetery to save a fair amount of money over the course of a year. And I would recommend, by and large, I think they have very good neighbors, and there is a lot of volunteer work that is going into that cemetery, and it's obviously a landmark in the community. And I would suggest that we grant them the easement.
People are dying to get this done.
Questions or comments from anyone?
Too much for you.
Side for motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'm on it.
Yes, you are.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And this should be an interesting discussion. Moratorium on Convenience Stores, Mr. Paul Stare.
One of the issues that has problems is proximity of one convenience store to another convenience store. And because of the number of them, there is a substantial likelihood that we're going to wind up with some either right next door to each other, or on the same block. And I've talked with planning, and there is nothing in the code right now that says one has to be 100 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, ultimately, whatever you select, away from another one. And the feeling is that is something that we should seriously examine. I would have suggested that we just move right into the process. However, in for something like this, it's got to go in front of the planning board. Planning board then makes a recommendation that comes to you, then you have to hold a public hearing, and then depending on your ultimate decision, you would pass whatever changes you deem appropriate. So it becomes a lengthy process. We're not looking for a long one. We believe that that entire process could be taking, taking place within, I would recommend 90 days. And then during that 90 days, we can go through the process. I don't know yet what the distance will be, but there are a lot of numbers that are bouncing around among people and planning, and ultimately, the planning board will be the ones who'll make a recommendation. to you.
Well, considering I've been talking about for the last couple weeks, the four on Eastern Avenue within two and a half blocks of one another.
That's the type of situation.
I think this is a really good thing to look at, that being said, I do have concern that we don't go over the 90 days, because if we do have a neighborhood that actually could benefit from a convenience store and have a person whose livelihood might depend on it, you know, I don't think we should drag this out too long, but I think it's...
I think this is an issue that is important to a lot of people, and I think we'll move through the process rather quickly.
Okay, other questions, comments?
So those people who, like, at this point are in the process of getting...
Wouldn't affect that.
Okay, so if they're already in the process, this, they would have no effect, they would get the normal review and consideration?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Kozier?
Thank you, I'm not sure, I know this question is related, driving down here and driving throughout many neighborhoods, we see many of these convenience stores with the windows completely covered with advertisements, so you really virtually can't see inside these stores with any activity or any customers that are in there, whatever, do we have anything in our codes, or can we look to see that? I mean, I just drove down here today, and they all have the, you know, the cell phone plans, and then you can't see into the stores, and I know that's part of, I think, the mayor's issue.
That's what we are looking at.
Right.
In terms of compliance and improving the overall appearance.
Well, their value that they add to the neighborhood as opposed to the negative influence. Okay, so there is something in our code now that we're just looking to enforce somewhere down the road, is that what we're going to do, or halfway down the road?
It's Fisher Benedict, it's kind of spearheading this and coordinating the review, so that we're still what I'll call the early stages of it, but as we move along, we'll do periodic updates to the council.
If I could just add to that, one of, because we, one of those things that we talked about through crime prevention through environmental design.
We worked on it.
Right, was that we had talked to some business owners, and I think sometimes they just don't, they're not aware, they just feel like, I just want to advertise every single thing in my store that I have to offer, but, you know, and having, educating them in that, and approaching that point of view, I think is one of the things that we want to make sure that we do, and that we have been trying to do within the neighborhood associations, going from, you know, business to business, so I can know, so.
Absolutely.
And just so it's clear, even for the moratorium, we need to have a public hearing, so the resolution you're going to see is one calling for a public hearing, okay?
Other questions, comments?
No.
Then do we need to move for a public hearing right now?
Yes.
Correct, so do we have a motion to call for a public hearing?
I'll move that, yes, absolutely.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any other business to come before government operation? It will be adjourned, I'm sorry, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
You got it right.
Second, all those in favor?
All right. Court orders claims?
Mr. Rudi put it on the agenda, so we just put it there.
As I asked for, I guess. Let's take those first two things before we go into the next section.
Yes.
Okay, other day recognition, looking for a resolution, recognize our day.
Second.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, city vehicle accident policy and procedures.
Hello, sir. Couple meetings ago, we had a discussion about accidents as they pertain to the waste collection area, and two topics were brought up, and I'd like to just present to you some of the stuff that backs up the information that we were talking about. The first page of your handout is Article 38, that comes out as the contract for the waste collection people, and in Section 1, it kind of identifies that running that we were talking about at the meeting that the waste collection people do, and that they're assigned a route, and when the route's done, they can go home, as it specifies on Page 2, the completion of the tour, and that has to, they have to be discharged by their assistant supervisor, so they do, they do hustle, you know, and, but it's a contractual feature, and if we wanted to change that, we would have to be, we'd have to go into negotiation on the contract. We also talked about drug test...
Excuse me, Bill?
Yeah.
On that, source up to the supervisor, if the job was done correctly and completely, then it's his call whether they can go home.
Right. We also talked about drug testing, on the third page of your handout, in the middle of the page, it talks about the post-accident testing, and there's a lot of words there, but if you flip over to Page 4, there's a table that kind of summarizes that if there's a death associated with the accident, that there will be testing of the driver, if there's a bodily injury, the second area, that needs medical treatment, and the driver is cited, there will be drug testing, if the driver isn't cited, there isn't, and with regard to the vehicles, if there's disabling damage to any of the vehicles and have to be towed, and there's a sighting of the driver, the driver will be tested, if not, there won't be any testing. But I also like to refer you back to Page 3, where it says reasonable suspicion testing. What Carl does, and he left us, but, what Carl does is that there's an accident that doesn't fall into anyone's category, his supervisor goes to the driver and talks to him and takes an assessment of whether or not he feels is a problem with the driver being under influence of anything, they will, if that supervisor feels that the driver could be, they call another supervisor to get a second opinion, and the second opinion comes, if it comes back the same, but they both agree that he should be tested, they go take him immediately to the ER for testing, so even if it doesn't qualify under this chart here, there's a follow-up that Carl does on drug testing, so, Mary.
So I guess, you know, when we're talking about the accidents, the number of accidents we've had, how many of those were a citation issued?
As we have all that information, then I can get that for us.
Okay, so I would, I mean, I'm just kind of making an assumption here, I would expect that at some point, some citations would be issued for falling out of a vehicle, for, I mean, even sliding on ice, I mean, one of us got into an accident because we slid on ice, a lot of times we get an issue, a ticket for driving too fast for the conditions, right? So, I mean, there are citations that could or should be issued, especially if someone's been in, you know, four or five accidents in a given year, all on ice, then maybe they're just driving too fast for conditions, you know, if there's not citations being issued, then we need to ask why not, and if it's just a, hey, it's a city employee, we're not going to give them a ticket, or if it's a, wow, is that going to happen to anybody all three times, then maybe we wouldn't get a citation, so.
Which segues into the next handout, and we'll go back to the questions, the next handout is coming around, and...
She has questions.
In terms of when we test and not test, and where there's no, I mean, couldn't we just test in every instance, so that takes all the subjectives, find out if, you know, or she, seems like they're under the influence of, you know, based on someone else's observation, which they may or may not really be able to do.
That's not true, that's what's in the contract, a police officer comes to say that bound by that contract, they do an evaluation, work through it, and may subject illegible to field testing or other kind of things.
But Mr. Winkler was talking about supervisor, then supervisor, then another supervisor, if they thought something was a mess.
Again, where the police department has reviewed it and done nothing, or determines that it's not correct.
Is criminal, or just a driving citation?
Using that term broadly, but where a violation, traffic ticket is issued.
Could be issued, or must be issued, I mean, I think some of it is prerogative of a police officer, right? So he can choose...
Because they would do an evaluation, working up to it, and if there are signs of alcohol or drug use, then they would proceed accordingly, so they are not bound by that contract.
Okay, so this basis table that you've presented us with, is this part of the contract, or is this something that we, I mean, could we consider...
That is in the...
It's in the policy.
...past hours, that's in the contract.
It is in the controlled substance and alcohol testing policy, which is connected.
Oh, and we're gonna...
That, it's quite thick, if you want me to send that to you, I can.
Okay.
I'll supply a good, but bringing it back to basic HR practices, what is our policy and procedure, I see names that are replicated up to four times on this list, do we have a policy in place in the city saying, okay, you have two of these kinds of accidents in one of these, and you're out, or what is the, what is the reprimand policy and procedure that we have for these, not just drug testing, but what are the repercussions on the employee?
Gary, do you know we have a formal policy on that?
We use progressive discipline when they're evaluated, and the impacts and circumstances of each case, the supervisor, Mr. Wilson, would act appropriately.
But we have in our, in our handbook, whatever, you know, our code, you know, three written warnings and you're out, and this equals a written warning, and this equals a verbal warning, and, you know, those kinds of things to protect the city, and also...
Step one, step two, and then a three, that's progressive.
Because I guess my question is how you can have, you know, three accidents but still be employed, you know, I mean, and what, I suppose it depends on what kind of accidents those are.
What constitutes an accident?
But if we don't have something, I mean, I would like to see what our policy is, or I think the council should see what the policy is with regard to reprimand, because I think it goes beyond drug testing, really, and you could be, you know, not on drugs, but...
Really, on the driver.
Maybe we need to assign you to a different job, or something, I don't know, you know what I mean?
I don't know if it's in there or not, but this is Carl's procedure, he files, I haven't gone through it page by page, but discipline, I would presume is part of this, I will send this to you also.
Thanks, Bill, in regards to their driving qualifications, are these are all CDL drivers' license that they, that they carry? And they're good for 10 years, is that what a CDL is?
Yes.
So do we, on a yearly basis, check their driver's license to see if there's been any incidents of Ed Kozier getting caught for drunk driving, or his license suspended? Is that something we can do on a yearly basis, take a look at all these guys and making sure their driver's licenses are still current?
I believe it's done, and I can follow that, another question up with Carl, and get back to the council, I believe that's done.
Every year, though?
Yeah.
Because again, my, they're good for 10 years, I mean, it could happen between now and 50 years on the road, and the city's just going to take for granted that he still has his license or sheet.
And if you have a traffic ticket for something else, that has nothing to do with work, it's...
That will be fine, exactly.
Well, it's also good information.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's for our insurance company as well, I think, because I know we used to do, Boys and Girls Club did it every single year, and when we first started the county, we did that every year as well, before we could drive in advance every single year, we had to show our driver's license, and they were going to check on us, so just...
What I also passed out, is, you've seen this before, but it didn't have the same column, there's a lot of information that's stored on each accident, and you have to define what an accident is, you know, there's, there's things in here, as you can read through, that really doesn't, shouldn't be in an accident database, it's kind of an incident that doesn't rise to a level of an accident, if you look at the right column, there are 16 of the, this is all of 2013, there are 16 that had a claim associated with it, and there's a lot that didn't, the no's are not a claim, 12 of them had cost or denial involved, so if you can look down there and see the numbers, we've got essentially 12 that we had money associated with for $33,000, and if you look at the costs of the settlement, $800, $700, $900, if you knock a mirror off the side of your car, it's going to cost you at least $500 or $600 to get it back on through, these are bumps, if you will, they're not the type of thing that we should be worried about, public safety in terms of life, but, you know, you all, I'm sure, have dealt with getting your car repaired, it doesn't take much to get to $1,000, Mary?
But my, my other concern about this is that, what does it do in terms of our experience with our insurance company, and how are they looking at the number of incidents as opposed to accidents, I mean, when they're looking at it overall, are they making, are they dividing it the way that you are, and saying, well, this is like, we paid out a claim on this, this one we didn't, because all this goes into our experience?
Well, this isn't divided at all, I mean, this is all the databases.
The way you just explained, the way you explained that it's some more, you know, incidents, so I wanted to know...
Well, that's just a column, that's just one column, but when you would provide, this is, this is our accident database for, for waste collection.
Okay.
Okay, if we were, if the insurance company needed a, this data, they get the whole thing, so I don't know how they'd react to that, but I would certainly include the category of the claim, so that they would know that, you know, we've, we've paid out 33, well, actually, there's one still pending on the bottom, so they could go up from 33,000 for 12 accidents, $3,000 an accident, I don't mean that these are, this is acceptable, I'm not promoting that this is acceptable, you can always do better, and, and I believe that there's a process that Carl goes through, if your name appeared five times on here, he'd be, he'd be checking into it, there are, there's another column which wasn't on here, because they couldn't fit it on here, what were the conditions, Carl, you mentioned icy, that's, that's a factor, it does, you still have an accident, but it's a factor in the accident, so, there's a lot of data that we have on these that we can produce, and...
So can I ask that question a different way, so is our experience based on the number of accidents, or the amount of money that we're paying out for that, that the insurance? Which would...
Deborah, can you answer?
I am stating it as both, how the insurance, how the rates, I have looked at the overall claimants since last year, the trend was down prior to years, going into 2013.
Wouldn't be interesting to see what the other two years, if some of these same people here...
I'm not sure, I'm not always great on terminology, but I think it was 11.12 that there were in the vicinity of 92 or 94 accidents, and it's gone down since then.
City vehicles?
Correct, city Y, and that, this is just the...
Yeah, that's true, this is just waste collection, because that's all we talked about at the previous meeting.
To go back to the citation of CDL, I'm sorry, another question I'd like to know, is there a requirement for any accident to be reported in, because if you have a CDL license, there must be more stringent requirements.
Recorded to DMV?
Right, if you're involved in an accident, or, or is it just citations that get reported for CDL, I would think if you're in a CDL and you're having a couple accidents a year, you're going to lose your CDL license, I would think. I know some people, I don't want to be exaggerating, but I know people said that it's pretty, you could lose it easily if you're not careful, but I don't know, I don't know how you would lose a CDL license, I would think being involved in accidents, regardless if you're cited or not, could resolve that, but I'd be... if you're cited or not, could result in that. But I'd be involved, interested to know specifically of the driver who was, fell out of the vehicle going around a corner. If they were cited, I would think in a minimum, that might result in a ticket. But I'd be interested to know specifically in that case.
Yeah.
Because if we're not issuing tickets to people who shouldn't be getting tickets just so that they don't get a drug test, then I think we're circumventing the process, which could be putting people at risk. And that's, that's my concern.
You want to see this with what, who was cited?
I want to know how many people actually got tickets, and then from that, how many people got drug tested.
Do you have any information to believe specifically that an officer has treated somebody fairly or even properly?
If somebody falls out of a vehicle while going around a corner and they don't get a ticket, I'd say that seems to me that maybe there's some privileges going on, or it just seems bizarre for someone to fall out of a car while driving it and not get a ticket. Maybe I'm wrong. I'd love to be proved wrong.
I guess, was there any citations issued that needed...
Right. That's the question.
If there was no citations issued, then I'd say something is out. I would have to agree with that.
So I'd want to know how many of these had citations issued, and then how many of those citations resulted in a drug test?
Well, again, there still could have been a drug test without a citation.
Right. Yeah. So that's really what I'm interested in now.
Okay. I will send these two documents to you. I will get this chart expanded to include at least the citations if I can. I'm not sure that we have, and we may have to go to the police department for that. But I'll get them.
Did you also want to include the road conditions, since we're taking all of those other things into consideration?
I'll put on here as much, as many things as I want.
Well, I mean, if we're taking all things into consideration, we ought to factor that in as well.
Yes, for sure. No, the right column, so claims submitted. Does that necessarily mean the claim has been paid or just submitted?
It's paid if it's got a number there.
It's got the check.
A dollar amount.
Okay, that means it's paid.
The only one that's not paid is down the bottom. The third one from the bottom is...
So this is all for '13?
2013.
Because I think we paid some more, but they were probably due, there were accidents that happened in '12.
I don't know.
There's more in '13, I believe.
There's one here with a lawsuit.
Yeah, there's a lawsuit, too. Those two, pending and lawsuit.
Two pending and lawsuit.
Another thing I think I'd like to see is, again, a cost estimate of the damage that's done on the city vehicles. That should be presented to us, I think, when we, you know, we approve anything, just so we know what's happening to the city vehicles. Because right now, we don't know. We have a body shop and a body shop manager that can certainly write an estimate, give us an idea how much damage is done to our city vehicles. Because there's a cost associated with it, but let's fix your math. Any other questions?
Just by looking at the dates here, I just did a quick glance. I mean, you know, your December, you know, your snow, your winters, believe it or not, it's 21, 21, 21, I mean, just guessing here, that occurred during the typical winter season, and 21 that occurred spring or summer. So it's pretty close, so.
Usually people drive a little more cautious and...
Fuck driving.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I'll entertain a motion for a second.
I'll move.
Second. All taken for five.